And here we go. We are live.
Okay, are we ready?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to call the Planning Commission for the Town and McCannellis to action. And the first item on the agenda is a concept plan discussion. Harmony Station Mixed Use Development. On Valley Road. Hi, Lamar.
Hi, I'm Gus.
Okay.
Craig, give me a thumbs up if you want to be unmuted right now. Okay, that's a no from him. Well, you do. Okay. All right, I'm just taking the attendance here real quick and then Steve, I will pull your PowerPoint up so you can get going. Okay, Steve, you're unmuted and good to go whenever. Whenever you want to take it away, basically. I sent you all, you know, some brief information. This is essentially a concept plan review, not quite the same as a sketch plan. But this proposed development was first brought to my attention right before the COVID shutdown. So we've been, you know, a little bit in the spin cycle trying to get back on track. But it's a very interesting plan from what I've seen. It's in the Ingamar neighborhood. It is potentially a couple floors of, you know, maybe retail on bottom and some apartments on the top. Very cool conceptual design for the building. However, there are not mixed use zoning provided in the C2 district, which is what the main portion of this parcel and this development are in. So they're going to be going to the zoning hearing board for a use variance for the residential piece. They can do, you know, neighborhood retail as the current zoning is. But I think that that's a very interesting concept and potentially a good direction to go for those couple areas that we have zoned C2. But I wanted to give the planning commission an opportunity to sort of hear what they're thinking and provide any comments before we hit the zoning hearing for the use variance at the end of the month. So that's kind of the background there. And Steve or Craig, if you have anything else you want to add. Craig, if you want to start talking, I got to unmute you. So just wave or something if you want to jump in. But otherwise, I've got Steve unmuted.
Do you want me to, you want to share a screen from here? Or were you going to run the PowerPoint from your end?
Yeah, we just do share screens with me as the host, so.
Go ahead and share the screen.
Here we go. I've got it up. Just a second.
I keep hitting it. Tell me.
All right.
Okay.
Here we go. And just holler when you want me to flip a slide.
Oh, well, what I want you to do is go in the lower right-hand corner and so that we hit the, there, that button. Thank you. Can you hit it again?
The, you mean the slideshow version? That's up now.
I'm seeing, I'm not seeing it. I'm seeing the left version. Is, are you seeing just the single slide?
I am seeing just the single slide.
I can see both.
Yeah.
Oh, mystifying. Okay, let's try this again. Ah ha. There we go. This is why. Figure it out.
All right. And for introduction, my name is Stephen Victor from Victor Watzl Associates. On with me tonight is Craig Triger, who owns the property. And we're going to be talking about a variance to the zoning hearing board. And in advance of going to the zoning hearing board, we are looking for any comments that you, as the planning commission, may have. The variance would allow multifamily to occur above retail in a C2 zoning district. Next slide. Again, the site is fronts on Harmony Court. And then what I would call backs onto Valley Road. South of West Ingamar Road. The majority of the site is in the C2 district. And that portion which is not in the C2 district is not developed. It's a drainage wet area. So the fact that a portion of the site is not zoned C2 is irrelevant to what we're doing here. I would point out also, the mixed character of this area across the street from us is the grocery store. Immediately to the north is a bank and then north of that is a gas station. Across the street from the grocery store is another convenience store. To the south of us directly is Oxford Court. And Old Ingamar Court is to the south and west of us. Those are townhouse developments. So the character of this area is a mix of single family, multifamily, and commercial for the, for the neighborhood. Next. All right. The site plan configuration that you were seeing here was one that was originally approved, I think almost 15 years ago. And the architect has stayed with this site plan, but come up with a new building configuration. The main entrance would come off of Harmony Drive on the right-hand side. That would be the high side of the property. And then one would drive in and then take a 90-degree left and curve around and down and eventually connect to Valley Road on the backside of the property. The intent is to create a three-story, three-level building, should say. The lower level would go to the parking lot on the left. The middle level would be the parking lot and main entrance on the right. And then a third level would be up and out of the ground. Next, next slide. This shows the configuration of the building. The top drawing shows the view as seen from Harmony Drive, where we're looking at the level, on street level would be retail. And the upper floor level would be the apartments. If we go around to the lower left, the Valley Road elevation, we're able to see the rear of the building, which would, I'm a little bit laughing for a moment because my wife is in the background and I can hear her. I don't know if you can. I'm going to go shut the door. So timeout for one minute. Okay, time it. Want to go again. Thank you. All right, the Valley Road elevation shows how we would have the entrances to the lower level area. And obviously, the side view goes from the side parking lot area.
What would the lower level area be used for?
We think that that will be non-retail type space because it's not a high, high location. So it's probably going to be offices or some sort of flex office space. So again, an area like that without prime visibility certainly is not going to be a great location for, you know, retail operations. But somebody who has an insurance business or something like that could easily have that location. Next slide. And these are just the renderings from the architect of what he would envision. The space would just basically be an open space available to be blocked out for three tenants within the lower level. You can see the entrances coming on the bottom of the sheet there, coming out to the lower parking lot. Next. This would be the mid-level, that level which faces onto Harmony Road. Again, it's partitioned out here in anticipation that there would be three or maybe four tenants within this space. The bottom of the sheet here would be the back of the building. And the front of the, the top of the sheet would represent the front side going out onto Harmony Road. The back of the building, again, at the bottom of the sheet, is an elevated deck that provides, you know, fire exiting. But more importantly, it provides the access to the apartments up above. It is off that deck that you'll see the door and going into a stair tower. So if we go to the next slide. Next slide shows you how the stair tower would go up to the upper level and how there would be the opportunity for three apartment buildings or apartment units, sorry. They're envisioned to be one-bedroom units. So the right would be one, center would be one, and the left one would be one. Okay, next. So the character here is following, and we use, using, the reason we're using Harmony Station is that it picks up some of the old railroad line, you know, the transit line that used to run right down Harmony Road. So we're sort of borrowing from that character for architecture for the site itself. Again, I think the thing that's unique here is that we are looking for a mixed use with the apartments, the retail apartments above, retail main level, and then the called a flex space office type space on the lower level.
What is the approximate square footage per floor?
The footprint for the building is 50 by 90. So it would be 4,500 square feet. Out of that would come the bathrooms and the stair towers, et cetera.
Okay.
Yeah, but the original concept that we did approximately 15 years ago had this exact same footprint, the 40, the 50 by, 50 by 90. So as you're looking at it here, that was 90, 90 feet wide. Okay.
You're looking for comments, I assume?
We would, and you know, either, you know, constructive criticisms, oh, let's do this, or supportive of it, or why we think this is really stupid, and you know, good luck at the zoning hearing board. So, but we're open.
Could you give some description of, could you give some description of the, what the building materials are, roofing materials, is it brick, is it, is it cleperd? What is the building made of?
I'm not sure that the architect has gone to that. But if I just look at the general character of that, it appeared to be a brick wainscoting for, as viewed from the front side, if we could, I, you probably can't see it here, but the brick wainscoting on, as viewed from the front side, and then a siding, probably to be something like a hardy plank type siding. And the roof itself could be either metal or some other, I would call it a high-end roofing material because the roof plays such an important part in the character of the building.
Brendan? Nothing at this point. Jonathan?
Do we have any kind of like idea of if it's going to be restricted hours for retail operations on the first floor? If there's families living above it?
No, hadn't thought in terms of, of that. But the type of retail that would be located within this area would certainly not be one that would be open 24/7. You know, it's, it's not a prime location where you would have, have the need or the demand for that. So I would say it's probably a 9:00 AM to, you know, 6:00 or 7:00 PM. It's not, it's not going to be 24 hours. It will not be restaurants. It will not be bars because of the parking area that we have would not support those land uses. So I don't see this being any different than, I live and my office is in Sawickley. And I see it really no different than the type of tenants that you would see along the main street of Sawickley. And in many of those places, we have second-floor apartments.
And these are all one-bedroom apartments that are being proposed, right?
Yes, the three, the three apartment units would only be one-bedroom unit. They're big. They're big one-bedroom units. But it's specifically by design, only three, again, limited by our parking.
Yeah, and I guess you bring up the issue of park. Has it been considered about designated parking spaces for the tenants, for, for the people that are using that for their residential, for residential uses?
We hadn't given that any consideration at this point. That might be something when, if we're granted the variance, that when we come back before you as part of a land development review process, we could give some and respond back to you with.
I believe on the, you all haven't seen the zoning hearing board materials. But what they submitted information-wise, I think they actually had one more parking space than they're required to have by our zoning ordinance for the proposed uses.
Lamar?
Lamar, I'm sending you an unmute request because you cannot do that on your own. Sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to ask about the parking thing. How many parking spaces are there?
I believe it's 43, Lamar.
And so that's one more than, than is needed. So an intended use is going to be developed over time. Are there some restrictions outside of the fact of no restaurants, no bars? Are there physical limitations that the building cannot have certain things like a commercial kitchen? Or, or, you know, are there any restrictions kind of baked in the cake there?
Well, I would, I would say you wouldn't want to stop it from having a quasi-commercial kitchen because you might get a, like a ice cream store, you know, or a specialty chocolate store, where they might make some of those items on-site. And then they're just selling them. And that would fall within the realm of just basic retail. I think when we talk in terms of the restaurants, that's a different land use. And so that, that would certainly could not occur because of the parking requirements. We'd be in violation of the ordinance.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Do we have any comments about the mixed use of this project? Whether you feel residential, retail, and office space are all what realistically appropriate for this area?
Stephen, I was hoping that you were going to come with a plan for the whole quadrant.
Well, this is a good start, don't you think?
This is what I, this is what I wanted. I was hoping, and then when they go, oh, well, you know, Craig owns all this. I'm like, well, good for Craig. He owns like all of Ingamar. This is good. So, um, so I was really hoping that you were, that you had a big revitalization plan for that whole four-way intersection. Can Craig, you got some extra money? Can you get some of that?
That's what you got muted for.
Craig's muted. Just give me a yeah. Come on. Because I, this, this use is all the rage. I mean, this is what all the people, my, this is what the 20-year-old, 30-year-old young professionals who don't have kids, don't want kids, aren't ready for kids yet, this is all the rage that they want. This is that my son totally is into this kind of use. I, we don't, we have a little bit of it at McCannellis Crossing, but not exactly like this. And it, it's, it's a thing. It's a big thing. And I, and I like the diversity of having different availabilities in McCannellis. So I, I really like it. I wish it was bigger and more and did you see the one that they have in Cranberry? Cranberry's such a mess. That's a bad example.
This is recorded.
Are you talking, are you talking about across from the municipal building?
Yes.
That's being done by Charter Homes.
Okay, and it has the, all the retail on the bottom and then the living spaces above?
It may. I don't know that plan intimately. So, yeah.
It's, but it's, anyway, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess the final comment I have on my end is when this first came across my desk, and well, Bruce's desk at the time, because that was when we were both still here, I, I had just kind of started digging into the comp plan a little more and thinking about sort of the neighborhood aspect that was talked up a lot in community feedback. And so when you're kind of thinking about, you know, how do we brand a neighborhood for sort of a revitalization, you know, laying the groundwork and things like that, it just seems like the slam dunk choice is, you know, leaning into the harmony line for that area. And so low and behold, what drops into our emails, but this like theme development, just, just total, you know, coincidence, I guess. You know, we're, we're all kind of thinking the same thing design-wise. So I just think this is a really interesting idea and, and a good first step to, you know, what, what could be something a little bigger over time. So.
Is this going to require a rezoning?
The, you mean the C2 or?
I don't know. I mean, the, yeah, from C2 to something else.
Well, not, not the way that this use variance has been submitted because we don't really have a district that would incorporate this kind of, you know, housing on top, commercial on bottom, especially at this sort of local main street sort of scale. So the best thing that I can come up with to tell them to apply for is a use variance to have these, you know, apartment units on the top floor.
If I could, if I could jump in there. Ted, this will specifically apply to our property because we can only apply for variances for ourselves. But there seems to be enough enthusiasm amongst yourselves and others we have talked to that this might be the seed that gets others to go either on their own private side or you, as the municipality, amend your ordinance and, and take this whole neighborhood area and create a new zoning district or an overlay district to allow this to go. So let's, let's hopefully get, we get our variance, we get this started and then we'll, you know, either privately or publicly, let's see if we can expand this to be something really cool and nifty in this area.
You guys just keep reading my mind.
Are these, will these be rentals or will they be owned? The apartments?
I, I, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, but there'll be rentals.
Rentals, okay.
The whole, whole building would be rental. It's, it's difficult to set up condominium when you have such a variety of uses sit in this type of fashion. So I highly suspect that this will, this will only be rental.
Thank you.
I don't see Lamar on here anywhere. Is he still on our?
He is still here.
He's still here, okay.
Okay, all right, good.
Any other comments? You have anything else, Kim?
Is there, is there ever a situation where they have a, a, an ownership of condominium in this type of situation? These have been around for a while.
It's, it's pretty unusual for a mixed use like this to go to condominium. I can't say that there's not something like this in other locations. But oftentimes, when you get commercial condominiums, they are all similar like buildings and like activities. For example, Menoc built them several years ago over near Ross Park Mall. There, they built some over in Sawickley along the boulevard there, near the old country end of that, if you're acquainted with that. There were some there. But most, most commercial activity is build, own, and rent.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Anything else?
Nothing. It looks promising.
Yeah.
Would?
It looks interesting, I think. I think it's, it's an interesting approach. I hope you're successful with your use variance.
Yeah, would the planning commission be willing to, it's not really a formal vote, but if there could be a, it seems like you're in favor just to make a comment to the zoning hearing board that you've discussed this and that, you know, if I could be so bold as to say you are, you know, in favor of seeing this go forward, or at least saying you didn't have any negative comments. So.
I will be sure to carry that in my brief.
Okay.
Zoning hearing board.
I think. Do we need a motion to do anything like that?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I was going to say, do we need any sort of motion to do that?
We don't, we don't make recommendations to the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, not, not required, kind of an informal feedback here was.
Yeah, excuse me, but I just didn't realize that RJ, that you'd be sort of carrying that word forward. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much. All right. I can, I can now safely drive home. And walk out of my office and go, go to the living room. Good night all.
It is nice after these, these meetings to have homebeats there.
It sure is. Well, have a, have a good night all. Bye-bye.
Good night. There it is.
All right.
You're back, Lamar.
Hey.
You must have scooted off the screen.
Yeah, if you put it in the grid, you can see everybody. But otherwise, it's just the speaker, right?
Yeah, we record in the grid format, but you can set however on your own screens.
But I think we're limited to nine, and I think we had 10 on that last.
They all pop up on mine, but I don't know what it does in the recording.
Mine's limited to nine, apparently.
The next item is on the agenda is a motion to accept the land development application for the passenger farms plan of lots. You said that this was not complete at this point. Do we want to discuss this?
Yeah, well, so I'll provide a little background on just sort of the way that this motion is formatted because, you know, I've been here for a few months. We haven't really had full land development applications coming through since I've been on board. So looking at the process code section for, for our zoning and land development ordinances, we have a formalized process where basically the planning commission officially accepts the administratively complete land development applications to sort of start the review clock. So if an application comes in and, first of all, it has to have all the pieces, you know, stormwater management, geotech, you know, all those different things that they have to have to have a complete supplemental. So those come to me. I check all of that off and that's how they even get on the planning commission agenda. However, in our code particularly, it assigns the official, you know, clock starting for the development to the planning commission by action. So if a land development were to come in and there are no comments on the engineer's letters except for, you know, you need to get your DEP permit, which usually is something that comes down the road or an HOP permit from PennDOT, those are common things to approve, you know, conditional, conditional on getting the HOP permit from PennDOT or something like that. But when there are quite a few more comments on the engineer's letters, sometimes, you know, to make sure those get done, you don't want to pass them on to the next level just with a conditional approval. So they have submitted all the pieces that they need for this land development application. But there were still several, just design and formatting comments on the stormwater engineer's letter, which were attached to the digital packets that I sent out. Where, you know, just between talking with the engineers and I, we all felt like we weren't necessarily. we all felt like we weren't necessarily comfortable recommending an approval at this stage, but we do want to sort of officially put this land development on the clock. If something had come in without all those comments, which may be the case more as we're doing pre-application meetings pretty frequently here, you could do an accept and approve motion at the same time. So that's why it just says accept on this one. I know there was a whole lot of information at one time, so hit me with any questions if you got them.
I'm not quite sure I understand what you said. Are you, are you recommending that we take a motion to approve this at some point in time here tonight?
Not, not tonight, we are going to have the developer back at the August meeting, once they've done some of those stormwater tweaks, and they'll make their full presentation at that time. But this is just sort of a formality of, yeah, we've got all your pieces, you're in the process.
But this is just a little bit different. This is a little bit different than, we've kind of done it before, Ted, that RJ has suggested, it kind of formalizes the process a little bit more. RJ, tell me if I'm getting this right, because she kind of explained it to me, is that you need a time when the time starts, when you start the clock, you know, it has to go. So we didn't really have a formal time when that started. It was kind of when Bruce said, okay, it starts. So RJ wants to formalize the process a little bit more, so she's saying there's 10 pieces that they have to have, while everything isn't, in it isn't perfect, the 10 pieces are present. And then she wants the planning commission to say, okay, the clock starts. We accept your application as complete, even though there are some ditties that have to be done. And then, once the ditties are done, then the planning commission approves it, which is different than accepting it, and then it moves on to council. Am I right on this, RJ?
You got it.
Okay, do you see what I mean? It's so, it's so, it just formalizes the process a little bit more. It was RJ's idea to kind of make it, it helps the developers know when the clock starts and have some sense of how it's going to go.
And if we have a couple of different comments, how does that get back to the developer, because they're not here?
Well, so this particularly ended up being formatted this way, I think, because it was sort of in the process during the COVID times, we didn't really get the chance to totally sit down and go through like a pre-application meeting and make some of these comments and advise them how to represent, you know, this calculation or that on the plan, which were mostly what the stormwater engineers' comments were about, like, you know, we want to see a little bit more mass on this pipe or this slope, and they have a couple modification requests that we need some more information for. So there will not be an approval motion without a full presentation, like you're probably accustomed to from the developer, right? It's just that they're going to come back next month, so they have a little more time to address those stormwater issues, because we're just not ready to issue, like, a professional opinion on the modification requests they have for the grading of the stormwater pond, for instance, or the location, without a little bit more info on the stormwater management. So we could have had them come in, but what had happened, I'm sure, is they would have just been tabled, and you would have had to do the presentation, you know, all over again a second month, which I don't think anybody wants to, you know, commit the time to that when we know it's just going to get tabled.
Well, I certainly leave the stormwater business up to the engineers, I don't pretend to try to get into their business. My comments are a couple, two in nature, and they're all very elementary.
Okay.
One, for example, in the gateway engineer's letter, the very first item, he's, the developer has requested to pay a fee in lieu of providing a recreational area. And as I look at our ordinance, that's $400 per lot developed.
Yeah, it seems like that is a very common choice that developers make.
I can see why, I mean, it's hardly anything. That's $6,800, which amounts to nothing. I don't know what we as McCandless can do with $6,800 to develop an alternative recreational area. I mean, just to put it in perspective, if they had to create a recreational area in the plan, they would have to give up, in theory, about one lot, which is a heck of a lot more valuable than $6,800.
Than $6,800, yeah.
So I can see, I can see them wanting to do this all day long, and then what we do with $6,800 gets lost in some accounting sheet back at the administration building. So I'm not a big fan of that as a concept, because I think that we do need to provide recreational areas and that the developer has to, has to have a, be invested in also wanting to do that. $68 is not much of an investment. And the second is, they have a request to modify their sidewalk request, and they don't want to have sidewalks on both sides of the street, as I understand it, because of a grade issue. And as we've been over and over and over at many of our planning meetings, about the need for sidewalks. And I think McCandless does need more sidewalks. And having a sidewalk only partially down a street until you hit something that makes the sidewalk not convenient is frankly not very effective. I'll use as a quick example, Duncan Road between Babcock and McKnight toward the McCandless Crossing area. You can be walking up the sidewalk on Duncan from Babcock toward McCandless Crossing, and the sidewalk on the right-hand side of the street just gives way, about halfway up that little incline. And you have to cross over to the other side of the street where the sidewalk is continuous, to continue further up as if you were going to CVS or further up. And then if you want to go into McCandless Crossing, then you have to cross back over the street. The first time you cross, have to cross the street, there's no crossing, there's nothing. So if somebody makes a mistake and starts up that sidewalk, not knowing that 100 yards up it gives way, they have to then cross a fairly busy street to get over to where the sidewalk continues. Long story short, I think sidewalks have to be continuous and go from place, from point to point. They have to serve a purpose. And allowing them, in this case, not to provide a sidewalk, because the slope is a little steeper, I need more information about how steep it is and how difficult it might be to put a sidewalk there nevertheless.
Yeah, so I do.
On this plan, on the March plan, March 9, I'm looking, why aren't these pages numbered?
What?
Plans, why are these pages numbered? I can't tell you, look on page 7, there's no numbers on the pages. I think that would be.
That number's on mine. Remember, I already see two down in the lower right-hand corner? C200, you don't have those?
I have C200, oh, well, they're not like 1, 2, okay, all right.
No, if you look at the first sheet.
It's an engineer thing.
Yeah, there's a drawing schedule on the first sheet. For some reason or other, they have them all numbered, it's funny.
Okay, so not 1 through 10, we have 200, whatever. Okay, so on C200, it shows the sidewalk going all the way around.
So if you're, if you're looking at.
I thought the comment on the letter was regarding Fassinger Drive, am I mistaken there?
The sidewalk that they are requesting modification for is Broad Meadow Drive. So they are proposing on the actual plan proper, where they're going to have the subdivision with the houses, sidewalks all around. Now, because they are improving Broad Meadow Drive off of Fassinger Lane and Meadow Crest Drive, they would theoretically, I believe, be required to put sidewalks on both sides. Looking at the topography, I can see why this request was made, because there's a field that they own, you know, on the one side, and on the other, there's pretty much just a hill that they would have to cut out and put a retaining wall, somebody's got a fence there. I would say, as long as they put an ADA accessible ramp on the one side they are requesting, I mean, it, there's no sidewalk on Meadow Crest on that side of the street anyway that I can tell. So there would need to be a ramp and crossing across Meadow Crest where it turns into Fassinger Lane. But on the side of the street that they're requesting a modification for the sidewalk, there isn't really anything on that side except for somebody's paved driveway. So it wouldn't necessarily be going somewhere, so.
Can we back up just a little bit here? Wouldn't they be required to put, under normal circumstances, to put sidewalks along, is it Broad Meadow Road? Broad Meadow Road and Fassinger, all the way down?
That's what, that's where I thought they were asking for the variance for, was coming down Fassinger.
That's what I thought also. But you're saying it's on Broad Meadow?
Well, let me double check, because maybe I got that wrong, hang on.
Because they are, they are doing grading on Broad Meadow. There's no reason why they can't prepare a flat area on that.
Yeah, but it sounded like she was talking about on the other side of the street, though, like, not the planned side.
On the other side of Broad Meadow, we don't have any control over.
Right, right, that's why, that's why I think it was that, I thought it was down Fassinger.
And I weren't, we're having a mistake in explaining that.
Their modification request number four, and the reason for the request, about five or six lines into that request says, on the northern side of Fassinger.
Yeah, I see, I see what you're saying now.
Yeah, yeah. But if we.
I looked at the plan and saw only one sidewalk side on Broad Meadow and went, oh, that must be the modification they're requesting, so I apologize.
So they were going to take the sidewalks down to the Fassinger intersection, is what they wanted to do, as I understand it. Or am I wrong on that too? Well, they show it stopping, don't they?
They stop it.
At the end of.
Right, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I don't like, I don't like that.
There, and.
Look, they're, look at all the work they're doing to create this, this drain, this sedimentation or, whatever they call it, pond, the pond at the.
Detention lane.
They're grading that entire thing, there's no reason why they can't grade it so that you can get a sidewalk in there. Now, as they get past, as they get past that and down Fassinger, that's different.
But RJ, aren't we going to address these things when they come and do their presentation next month?
Yeah, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to come back, because I'm going to be in contact with the developer for them to do their revisions anyway. I will let them know about the sidewalk discussion and that it seems that the wind may not be blowing in the way of the planning commission recommending that particular modification. And, you know, see if they have any feedback that they can address when they make their full presentation. Regarding the other modification requests, those have to do with grading, and particularly the stormwater with one of them, and those are things that we would want recommendations from Gateway and PDE as to whether they thought they should be approved or not, which is the more information they're still waiting on.
What is their, what is the disposition of lot 051? The big parcel? Parcel 051, the one along Fassinger.
Let me pull that up.
It's just a, they don't show anything, doing anything to it. I mean, who will own it, who will maintain it, all that good stuff.
Let me get there just one sec.
Are you talking about below the development?
Yes, it's all part of the property.
Right, right. Was that the one where they were supposed to make a note to leave existing trees, so there are trees there? I have to go, go look at that property, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I would suggest that these are probably questions that are a little more appropriate for the developer at their presentation, but right now, all that we're doing is identifying that all the pieces they were required to submit for an application have indeed been included. So, yeah.
One thing that I was deeply concerned about was the short distance. It seems like, and everyone, if you would look at, if you're pulling out, if you're pulling out from this broad view court, do you see how blind you are? The road curves around to the right, on the right it curves around, on the left to the left. That looks like a really difficult, short space to pull out. Do you see what I'm saying? You could look right, by the time you look left, someone could come right on you.
Well, I assume they have to comply with the site triangles on that sort of thing. I haven't, I didn't, although I didn't see any.
It seems, it seems really kind of short.
There is not, to my knowledge, right now.
Oh, here it is.
Any comment from the engineers.
On sheet C200.
Yeah, that's where I am, C200.
There is a, there is a note that, it says clear site triangle.
Yeah.
Rio skinny triangle on Broad Meadow Road. If you can see that.
I did, but if you look at that long straightaway on Fassinger Lane, that really just looks like a place where people would hit that, living on grubs. I know how they are on straightaways and come flying around that corner. I just, I just felt worried, it seemed, it seemed like.
I think we, I think we need to go out there and take a look at that. As I recall, that's a hill going up, isn't it?
I don't know, I have to go look at it, I gotta go drive it. But that was the.
But beyond that, I don't know what happens.
Coming towards Broad Meadow on the right or from Fassinger? Yeah, that would, that would be coming up a hill.
Yeah, coming up from whatever that is, Sloop Road, that's not Sloop Road, it's Rochester, maybe? Coming up from there towards, towards Broad Meadow, that's a hillside going up, isn't it? And then I don't know what happens beyond that, where it turns to the left at that point. But I think that's a neighborhood up there of some sort.
Yeah, it is coming up from Rochester.
Well.
I'm clicking through the original.
I did have, I did have one more question too, and RJ, and I don't know if this is the right time or not, but on lot 109, if you look on C300, thank you for helping me read the pages, Ted. I was looking for like 1 through 30. On lot 109, the stormwater drainage is in the front of the lot, closest to the road, but you can see that property drops off steep behind it. It seems like all the water on that property is going to run the other direction where the stormwater drain is not. Do you see what I'm saying? Because the stormwater goes behind lots 117 all the way to lot 111. Okay, you can see those lines, and then on 110, it stops. And on 110 and 109, the stormwater is in the front. Now, you can look at those numbers, and you can see 109 drops way off the back.
Yep.
So isn't the stormwater going out the back when the storm drains in the front?
No, they should pick that water up somehow.
Right, and also the, the way that they have the driveways sighted appear to be just in the front of the property. So in theory, you know, certainly this is not a guarantee we've learned over the last couple of years, but in theory, that should all be pervious surface or mostly pervious surface, aside from any deck back there. So good chance that it could just infiltrate, but that may be something that the developer has addressed elsewhere. I'm clicking through the engineer's letter here. I don't immediately recall that they made a comment about that. But I'll.
You can see that just, just like Kim said, they built up those lots, I believe, or they're cutting down, I can't tell.
The top is cut, the bottom is, the top is cut, the bottom is filled.
Okay, if that's cut, then we're keeping the water on site from lots 117 down to lot, eh, 112 or 111.
Right, but.
Then it starts to flow, then it starts to flow the other way, is that it?
That's what it looks like to me by the, by the, it looks like it drops off the back.
Kim's asking about 101, I think.
Nope, 109.
Oh, 109.
The stormwater's in the front, and 109 drops off the back.
Yeah. They would, they should pick that water up and take it somewhere.
All right, there you go, there's the answer.
I don't know that there's much back there, to be honest. Like, I think that's just a bunch of trees.
Is that, is it all wooded back there?
Yeah, there's, there's not much back there at all.
Because it goes from 180, the property goes from 180. Because it goes from 1, 180, the property goes from 180 to, um, 1, yeah, it goes from 1180 to 1130 on that one lot. That's a lot, isn't it?
I think that those, those right there might actually just be the natural contours. And that is all wooded, which is why it has sort of the lumpy cloud looking structures drawn on there. Those are, those are the existing trees, I believe.
And that won't be cleared with that, for the house or the yard?
It, it does not appear on this plan that they are intending to do that. And that probably is their buffer yard on that side. So it would be advantageous to keep it.
Okay. That was, those are my two questions.
The Brook Park Manor to the north of those properties. Are there houses or apartments or something on that? Anybody know?
Brook Park Manor, you said?
Well, it's just, I'm just reading what it says on sheet C110. The Brook Park Manor.
Yeah.
It's a big, there's a big lot. It looks like there's houses budding up against this lot.
I think Lamar was in-
Lots, budding up against this lot, uh, from, from 117 down to 112. And then there's a big lot behind lots 111, 110, 109.
Yeah, the, those are all houses. Those are all houses. I just checked them out.
Yeah, I have the, uh, if you'd like, I can share the screen. I have the Google Map up if you wanna look at it.
Oh.
RJ, can you, uh, help me out?
Yeah, it's, it's just us in here, so we should be okay to share the screen. I never do this, so, good lord.
Technology is wonderful, isn't it?
Don't, don't do anything untoward. I think you should be able to share your screen now. Give it a shot.
Okay.
We've always had it locked down so that it's just me.
Okay.
I don't see anything. There we go.
There you go.
Let's see. Ah, there we are.
So here's the, yeah, these are houses up here. So this is, this is Broad Meadow here. We've got Fastener here. And this is Rochester Road. And this is the, I've got it in, um, you know, like 3D mode so that you can kind of see that there's a slope here. But it comes up from the park here, goes around, there's Fastener, and then Broad Meadow here. These are all houses back here.
Okay. That's what I figured when I saw all the different names and small, small parcels. Okay. So the guy used to farm that property, huh?
Looks like it, or, yeah, or they're really diligent about how they're gonna mow that, that parcel.
Yeah, and I think there's a comment on, on the original letter that says something like, you know, any of the existing structures are gonna be raised.
Yeah. So that, that would be this here and, and-
Yeah, I, I would presume so.
Okay.
Any other questions about the, any way I can help you with the Google Map here?
It's bigger than it, bigger than I thought it was. Okay.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's a-
All that wooded area in the back was-
What is this, what is this part? What is that? Whoop, there you go. In the back-
Right here?
What is that building?
This right here?
Well, down, straight down. Right there. Whoop, up, up, up. Right there. Whoa, you missed it.
Crosshair. It looks like there's a building in the, in the field.
Yeah, it's probably a farmhouse. Trish said that she saw cattle there just a year ago.
It's a, it's a, I think they said-
It's called metal sided barn.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on the plan.
Okay. Well, I don't know. I, I think if you, if you have communication with, um, the developer of Fastener Farms, Miranda Holmes, I think you ought to tell them to, uh, take a good look at all those sidewalks and how he's handling water and things like that.
The sidewalks are a modification request. So I mean, ultimately, for those and the other three, it's up to Planning Commission to recommend, then recommend.
But you know, he's not showing them, which is what he has to do.
And, and then, you know, gets to council and-
Yeah, yeah. He can, he can ask for a modification, but he has to show them anyway.
Right.
And he hasn't shown them. So I, that should be on there.
Anything else on here before I stop to share?
No, that's, that's, that's good.
Thanks.
That was good. You're much more technologically facile than I am, Lamar.
I'm an IT project manager. I do this all day.
I rarely use my computer at all. Okay. Is there anything else that we need to do? Do we need to have a formal acceptance of this plan?
We do by motion.
Okay, could I have a motion to that effect? That we accept this plan for review?
I've moved to accept it for review.
Could I have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Who was our second? I missed you.
What's that?
Lamar, thank you. All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, where am I at here? Oh, here we go. Discussion of proposed meeting start times for consideration in 2021. Who brought, somebody brought this up, didn't they?
Yeah, this was, um, that, that was, that was Rob, I wanna say, or Ron.
Not here.
Ron, yeah. Yeah, I, but we did get some, some positive feedback, um, from pretty much everyone.
Yeah, I have no problem with doing it. I think you have to do it in 21, probably because we have this all posted on our map, on our calendars, right?
That is correct. Yeah, I, I would advise doing it at the start of a new calendar year.
Okay. Uh, is there, is there any comment on that by anyone? Anybody have a problem with it?
I guess the only comment would be that if, if the public is used to all meetings starting at 7:30, just kind of as a general proposition. And if none of the other committees or commissions start at seven, do we confuse the public by starting at seven o'clock and everybody else does everything else starting at 7:30?
Um, Activities Committee is meeting at 6:30. That used to be the case. And the Heritage Center starts at 4:30. So people, that's been a long held policy of keeping everything at 7:30. But people are gonna have to look at the schedule because those boards are all changing their-
Yeah, I, I think the Tech Committee does a different meeting time as well. They're definitely-
We have the savvy app there.
Yeah, Tech Committee's there too.
Yeah.
I think we can get the word out.
Yeah, for sure. And, and anytime that, like at the beginning of the year, you know, everyone really can set different meeting times if they want. Although, I really do like the seven o'clock idea for next year. But, but, so those all get advertised at the beginning of the year.
Is this conflicted with anybody's schedule? Lamar, or Brendan, or Jonathan, or any of you guys? Dan, you're in the same category as me, aren't you? You're retired, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sort of quasi-retired. But I'm not working right now, so that's good. All right, well, why don't we, why don't we do that then? For 21?
The, the actual vote would be at, you know, whatever the first, or probably the last meeting of, um, you would probably vote in December to set the January meeting at seven o'clock and then vote to advertise. Sandy, you might know better when our bulk advertisement goes out since I haven't been here for a year.
We, we set the council votes on the calendar earlier than that.
Oh, okay.
But find out from Bob because that's presented to the council and we, we, we vote on that. And that's, that's a resolution by council. So it will need, so find out exactly when that is. It's around budget time.
Okay.
So it's later in the year, maybe September or whatever. So you, we'd have to decide before then.
Is there any reason why we couldn't do it now?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we do a motion to add that to the agenda?
You mean the, the planning?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Meaning, uh, we've decided that that, that the seven o'clock hour was fine. Uh, to me, it would be, it would make sense to just add that as an agenda item for, you know, whatever meeting we need, uh, to do that.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying. Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that, I'll coordinate with, um, Bob and Tricia to make sure that, that we know what meeting is immediately prior, um, to-
Yeah, I don't know how much bureaucracy we need around it. I just, you know, just add and make it-
Duly noted. And trust me, I will remember having an earlier starter.
Good luck. Okay, approval of June 2nd Planning Commission minutes. Did we get Planning Commission minutes? We, we did, didn't we?
Yep. Sandy sent them out. She was quick.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
I moved to approve the minutes.
Second? Somebody?
I wasn't there.
Okay.
I got Brendan.
All in favor?
Hi.
I think your, your voice must be off, Brendan. I can't hear you.
He is theoretically unmuted.
Oh. I don't know, whatever.
Give it this or that.
What's that?
How he can vote, yes, or he's for it.
He's voting yes. Okay, uh, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Wait, wait, wait. RJ, you didn't public comment in the oil and gas stuff for next month?
We have nobody except for us on this Zoom.
Okay.
So I don't think we have any public comment.
Okay, okay.
Um, yeah, the oil and gas stuff. So I, I think we, I mean, it depends on how council wants to, you know, move forward from, from this point. And I know Kim and I are checking in, um, next week about a couple of different things. But the council did pass the sort of latest draft that everyone was discussing here with the safety regulations and just in the institutional district as a pending ordinance doctrine resolution. So that essentially means, you know, the safety regulations discussed and taking out of the C2 are considered in effect until either there's a substantial change to the draft and what's considered or they officially pass that. There's no direct time limit on it. It's basically just to give us some time to think and go, okay, is overlay, you know, do the research legally, engineering wise, does this make sense? Does looking at a different setback make sense? So on and so forth. Um, so that was, I think that was just at the last council meeting or it was within the last month, um, that, that, that was done, right, Kim?
Yes.
Yeah. So nothing new to report yet, but, but we will be given some thought to how we look at the issue overall and what makes sense in our zoning.
Okay.
So Dan did exactly, exactly what I did. And that is, he took the whole, the whole thing and he went through it. And he said, "I think this would be a good thing, change. I think this would be a good change." That's what I did too. This little point here, this little point here, exactly kind of what Dan did. So I wanna know how we can get those comments from the Planning Commission to, to, um, to have those things added or changed or to have those things tweaked. So I understand the overlay has to be done by the engineers. I'm not talking about the overlay. I'm talking about the rest of the ordinance. Because Dan had some good comments, some of my comments I would like to have added. I'd like to hear comments from other people too. So how, how, what's the best way to go about that?
Um, well, so anytime I've, at least, you know, since I've been here, that I've gotten those, which I do really like, you know, either a group of comments on, hey, in this section, I was thinking this, or, you know, track changes or something like that, whatever your level of comfortability is with Word. Um, you know, that's great. But, uh, anytime I get any sort of comments like that, if it's particularly a zoning ordinance, I'll bounce those over to the solicitors, um, town attorneys, you know, whoever's sort of the specialist on that particular, uh, ordinance topic. Um, so like, I think this one was Katie. She had all of that information going in and those were considered, you know, edits that either were up for discussion by the group and everyone said, yeah, we should do that, or, you know, just little formatting things. Like, I know we, we made sure the definitions were alphabetized in that section as per Dan's comment. Um, I'm, I'm always gonna pass those on to the attorneys. If there's a more formal way that you wanna do it, we certainly can. Um, but, you know, I try and take notes whenever there's a discussion like this, or we'll be having them on either the Zoom call or someday, whatever in the future it is, in the meeting, that they're there to also take notes if it's a zoning ordinance that they're working on with us.
Well, how do we get those comments in front of the attorneys? I mean, and I, I hope I wasn't offending anybody, but it looked to me like the thing was cobbled together from about three or four different sources. And there were certain inconsistencies. Decibel levels, in one instance, they're 60. Another instance, they're 55. Seems like things ought to be consistent. In one instance, they said there was no onsite storage. Another one says it's gotta be this, this, and this. Those are the inconsistencies that I think will make for a difficult and troublesome ordinance down the road.
Mm-hmm. Um, well, in this specific case, that was something I believe that was sent as an email attachment. So I just forwarded the email with the attachment to them.
So when can we see the changes that they have made?
Oh, um, well, the last time that they did anything with the draft would have been at the pending ordinance point. Um-
But these changes, these changes weren't in there, is what my point is.
Yeah, so, so probably the next time that we end up, um, discussing it, whether it's at the Planning Commission or a council, you know, council might want to see those changes made and then do a motion to send it down to the Planning Commission, you know, move forward to advertise. Now, um, again, depending on how you wanna work with the overlay district, that would be a separate change to the zoning map rather than just a text amendment to the ordinance. Um, so those might be sort of two different processes. But at, at this point, I would suggest probably at the Planning Commission, taking another crack at sort of any of those comments as a group discussing what you wanna send up to council to be considered for the final adoption. Whatever's good at that level, those get, um, implemented, you know, put into the draft ordinance, and then that's the final version you would pass, if that all makes sense.
Well, I, I'm not sure I followed all of that. I think that the attorneys, whoever drafted this, want to take the comments that have been submitted, sift through them and make the changes that are suggested unless they feel or can give a reason why they don't make sense to make those changes.
I agree with you, Dan. And, and so what, what, unfortunately, what happened is we were, council wanted so much to get the safety ordinances in place just in case something happened, that Planning Commission didn't get a good shot to get all this done. So that's why I'm trying to go back and give everybody a chance to do what Dan did, to do what I did, if you want to, and find anything and then submit all those. And I like RJ's idea about next week, uh, send them around. Um, Dan Cinders, again, please. I'm sure it's buried in my email somewhere. I'll send mine again. And everyone, look at them, see what you think. I like this. I didn't like this. I thought it was good. Here are mine. And then maybe we can hash out a few of them that the group can agree on. We can still send ones that the group doesn't agree on, but at least some that the group agree on to send to the attorneys and say, "This comes from us and these are the things we would like to have added." How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Yeah. I'll send mine out probably tomorrow or the next day.
Okay, I'll try to find mine to do the same. And please, everyone else, look at that ordinance, um, and these inconsistencies that Dan's talking about. Or any of your ideas, please send them around so we can kind of be ready for next meeting to, um, to submit some serious things to the attorneys.
Yeah, and, and the latest addition of that should be in the council meeting packet of the meeting in which they did the pending ordinance resolution.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else for this meeting? All right, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Funny, that, that didn't, you know, several people-
That went over.
Yeah. All right, second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay. I guess that's it. I like the background that you have, Lamar. How did you do that?
Thank you. I'm in the weeds.